I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our special meeting, special board meeting for November 23rd, 2015. Tonight we have a little bit different makeup of the agenda. But we're going to start with the survey results presentation from school perceptions. Then we'll have some public comment. Then we're going to have some topics. We have one topic for action before we suspend Robert's rules and have discussion among the board for both the results and next steps in this process. And then we'll go back to Robert's rules, any motions that may be made at that time before we adjourn. So I guess leading off the agenda then will be turn it over to Sue Peterson.
Great, thank you. All right. So I'm from school perceptions and we conducted your survey in October, November of 2015.
Oh, now I'm on. So we conducted your survey in October, November of 2015. As you remember, residents in the district were mailed a paper survey. And each survey that we sent out had a unique survey access code. And for those who prefer to take the survey online, otherwise surveys were completed by paper and mailed back to our office. We had 1,731 survey responses, so we were thrilled with your results. 559 of those came in the form of a paper survey that was returned to our home office in Slinger. So as we go through the data, we've got a margin of error of plus or minus 2.4 percent. When we look at your respondent information, you can see that we had great representation across all age groups. We were thrilled with the 20 percent with over the age of 65. 2010 census data would tell us that that population is usually about 16 percent of your population. So to have that at 20 percent is great because we also know that that population does what? Goes to the poll and votes, exactly. So we were thrilled with that. When we asked if they lived in the school district of Hudson, 99 percent of your survey respondents did live in the district. The 1 percent that didn't, remember you'll see that we'll remove them when we start talking about tax tolerance. And most likely that was a school district employee that doesn't live in the district but responded to the survey as an employee. In which city or township did you reside? You can see that we had representation from all of your municipalities. Nick, you think this is representative of your communities? So good representation. We asked if you were an employee of the school district. 10 percent of the survey respondents were district employees. 90 percent responded that they were not. When we asked if they were parents, 51 percent of your survey respondents were parents, 49 percent were not. When we asked what school did they attend, you can see that you had representation across all of your buildings. Nick also felt that this was representative of your district. And then we asked this question as far as what other relationships do you have with the school district of Hudson? So you can see that the breakout there. Then we ask a question to just again create some sort of a relationship with the district as far as how often they attend district-sponsored events. So that could be athletic performances, plays, any other type of event. And we remove staff obviously from those because often they're attending. And what we can see is that you've got a pretty engaged community of your respondents that were, that do participate in activities and many of them, especially your parents, 10 or more times. But also the fact that your non-parents seem to be actively involved in, in your schools. We've got one question that we ask about home value. How do you feel the quality of Hudson School District is affecting your home value? Nearly half said that they felt it had a positive impact. We're happy with that. That's typical of what we would see in a survey. Then we ask a question regarding communication of how would you like to receive information regarding the Hudson School District? So we look at two things. Obviously, we look at how do parents want to be communicated with? But also how do your non-parents and those that don't have a connection to your school? So strong response as far as district mailings and the Hudson Star Observer. We think this is perhaps the highest response we've gotten on a newspaper in any survey that we've conducted. So bodes well to the Hudson Star Observer. And Nick doesn't need to be tweeting anytime soon as we're sitting down at 2 percent. So it doesn't need to be high on your priorities. We asked some questions about the Hudson difference as far as some feedback on how well the district was doing in certain areas. And again, we're going to say that if everyone that responded gave it a four, you would see a four. If everyone that responded said poor, the average would be a one. Anytime we do this, we're going to have something that rises to the top and something that rises to the bottom. And again, now you're going to see what I talked about when I came and visited with you, I believe, the first time back in May or June or whenever it was, that we're going to start to separate our information out by all residents, by your district staff, by your parents, and then your non-parent, non-staff. So you can see where things fall. I think in general, your community does feel like the district provides a high-quality educational experience and does a great job of preparing students for life after high school. Most typically, we would see that spending tax dollars wisely falls to the bottom. So that doesn't concern me at all. When we asked overall, how satisfied are you with the Hudson School District? Response is great. About two-thirds said that they were either satisfied or very satisfied. Financial priorities. So this was the page in the survey where we asked people to determine high, medium, or low as far as different facility needs that needed to be addressed in the district or that you had identified as a need. So when we look at these, we've organized them according to that fourth column, the non-parent, non-staff residence. Highest priority, and the top third really is this group, but your highest priority was that completing the process of updating your science and tech ed labs. Next was addressing classroom needs at the high school. Replacing roofs, windows, and doors. And you can read the rest of the list there, but that would be the top third. We would call this the middle of the pack. Expanding cafeteria kitchen, expanding the gym to meet instructional and co-curricular demands at the high school. Updating lighting and sound systems. And then the bottom third of the list there.
Are you going to take questions as we go?
Do them at the end.
Do them at the end, alright.
Yep, because then that might help. So the reason that we create this list, if we look at these three groups, is that in the event that you decide to make some decisions of what items you're not going to address as you move forward with your facility pieces, this would give you a guide as to where the community, what their rankings were. So that was the reason this was included in the survey. Now, knowing the information, what advice would you give the school board? So this was an opportunity for us to tell a little of a story and ask the community, what do you think? These are great numbers that 71 percent of all survey respondents said it's time to address the needs and pursue a referendum. So if the newspaper's here, that's your headline. 71 percent said it's time to pursue a referendum. Alright, if you remember, we settled on three options that night. And so we tested three different facility options. So within each of those options, we asked three questions of your residents. So we asked about the facilities itself, we asked about the auditorium, and we asked about your athletic fields. So I'm going to give you statistics and reports out as far as all residents. And then I'm going to break it down into those three different groups that we talked about, okay? So we looked at option one, the 96 to 1.43 million dollar option, which was option one. Do we want to, do I need to read option one or is everybody good with? Think we're good? Okay. 50 percent of all residents responded that yes, they would support option one. 40 percent said no.
Yeah, I think that for the benefit of the people, since this is being videoed, I don't think we have to read the entire, but the basic makeup of option one, the fact that it's a new 10-12 building and remodel of the current high school and converting it to an 8-9.
And then maintain Hudson Middle School for your 6-7. So when we looked at all survey respondents, half of the respondents said that yes, that they would support option one. 40 percent said no and 10 percent were undecided. But we're going to go ahead and disaggregate that data like we promised that we would do. When we asked your staff, 62 percent of them said yes, 12 percent were undecided, and 26 percent said no. Then we asked your parent residents, so your non-staff that were parents. 66 percent said yes, 7 percent were undecided, and 27 percent said no. And then we're going to get to your non-parent, non-staff residents. And this is the respondent group that I need you to think most critically and look most critically at. And the reason is that they represent about 75 to 80 percent of your community. So they have little to no connection to your school. So when we look at this group, we see that 32 percent of respondents were supportive. 12 percent undecided, 56 percent no. As we move through, I will tell you that most often you're going to pick up about a third of those undecideds that will move to a yes, two-thirds will move to a no. So if we look at this, at this point, our methodology would tell you that your community would not support option one. The building piece. Then we're going to go ahead and look at option one and with the referendum to add an auditorium. When we asked all residents, 47 percent yes, 42 percent no. We broke that out with your staff, 62 percent yes, 28 percent no. Your parent residents, 61 percent yes, 29 percent no. And again, that group that makes up about 80 percent of your community. Non-parent, non-staff residents, 31 percent yes, 57 percent no. We'd pick up about a third of that 12 percent. If this was on ballot tomorrow, most likely it would not pass. Option one then had the piece about the outdoor athletic fields. When we asked all residents, 46 percent yes, 43 percent no. We broke that down again with staff, 62 percent yes, 27 percent no. Your parents, 63 percent, 28. And then you see the shift with your non-parent, non-staff residents, 27 percent said yes, 60 percent no. Alright, we're moving on to option two. Nick, do you want to give us the?
So option, option two would be to update and renovate the current high school building for a 10-12 and construct a new 8-9 building at the UU property. And then the current middle school would be a sixth, seventh grade building.
Alright, so we're going to go through those same 12 slides. Would you support the 93 to 100.9 million dollar referendum for option two? When we look at all residents here, we see that 35 percent were yes, 51 percent were no. A little more support with your staff at 45 percent yes, 40 percent no. Parents were at 44 percent yes, 45 percent no. Your non-parent, non-staff were at 22 percent yes, 60 percent no. So you'd pick up another 6 percent of those undecided. So what we know based on our methodology is if this was posed to voters today or tomorrow, this most likely would not pass. When we look at the addition of the 2.8 to 3.1 million dollars to a referendum to renovate or improve your existing auditorium, 42 percent said yes, 44 percent said no. Staff residents were at 58 percent, 30 percent no. Your parents, 52 percent were in support, 36 percent said no. And your non-parent, non-staff group, 29 percent yes, 53 percent no. So it's the same story. If this question were posed to voters today, most likely would not pass. Then we asked about those outdoor athletic fields, 10.3 to 11.2 million. All residents, 37 percent said yes, 48 percent no. Your staff were at 49 percent in support. Parents, 51 percent were in support, 37 percent no. And your non-parent, non-staff residents, 20 percent were in support, 61 percent no. You'd pick up a third of the undecided. I feel like a broken record. If this was posed to voters tomorrow, this most likely would not pass. We move on to option three.
So option three would be additions and renovations to the current high school building and keeping the same grade configuration of 9-12. And then additions to the, and possible renovations to the middle school and keeping the current grade configuration, six through eight.
Thank you. So this was a question regarding a 79.2 to 86.1 million dollar referendum. All residents, 55 percent said yes, 32 percent said no. Your staff, 68 percent were in support, 23 percent were not. Your parent residents, 63 percent were in support, 25 percent were not. And your non-parent, non-staff residents, 45 percent were in support, 39 percent were not. You'd pick up a third of that undecided. And we believe that if this question were posed to voters tomorrow, this likely would pass. Then we went and asked that same question regarding the auditorium, the 2.8 to 3.1 million dollars for your auditorium. All residents, 53 percent were in support, 35 percent were not. Staff residents, 71 percent were in support, 20 percent were not. Your parents, 63 percent were in support, 25 percent were not. Your non-parent, non-staff residents, 40 percent were in support, 44 percent were not. You would pick up a third of that 16 percent. This one would be close. We asked about your outdoor athletic field. All respondents, 46 percent were in support, 40 percent were not. Staff residents, 67 percent were in support, 24 percent no. Parents, 57 percent in support, 30 percent no. Your non-staff, non-parent respondents, 30 percent yes, 52 percent no. You'd pick up a third of that 18 percent. This most likely would not pass. So at this point, as we were looking at the data, our indications tell us that option three is really where your residents are leaning as far as what they would support. However, our survey asked about a new school location, if that was indeed an option. So if you recall, we split your community up into five areas. And we asked the question, if a new school were built, please select all sites that you would support. 67 percent of respondents were in favor of area two and would support area two. 48 percent from area one. There you can see. So I'll go back so you can see that again. So area two, area one. 35 percent were in area four, 31 percent in area three. And 17 percent in area five. Then we put another piece on here that we hope will correlate when we get done with our data. Nick and I were talking this week and discussing, but sometimes these don't always jive, which gives a mixed message for a district as you're digging through your information. So if you remember, we created a table for people to look at as far as a referendum amount and what that property increase per $100,000 of property value. And perfectly, this data correlates with what we saw when we were discussing options one, two, and three. So this 50 percent line shows us that your non-parent, non-staff residents would support an 85 million dollar referendum. And we make some assumptions that if you were willing to support 125 million dollar referendum, you're most likely willing to support 115 or go down, not willing to go back up. So what we can see here is that of all residents, there's, you're just on the brink of 95 million. With your staff, you're at 105 million in support. Your parents, the same at 105. But again, that group that makes up 75 to 80 percent of your community, that non-parent, non-staff residents, this is why you do the survey, because this is the data that most correlates with how a referendum will turn out. That data is telling us that your community is sitting at support at 85 percent, which correlates back to the first question in option three. We did ask some questions regarding if you would not support any of the three options covered in this survey, what is or are the reasons? You can see that respondents could check multiple answers. Too expensive, tax increases too large. Was the most popular reason. Felt the projects were unnecessary. Didn't support the athletic updates. Don't support a third secondary school. Don't support auditorium updates at 50 percent. And your, those couple of pieces then do align really with what we saw when we looked at the options and how respondents were there. We did provide for the district a full comment report that I think you'll be putting on your website within the coming week. That has all the responses. But we also looked for about the five key themes that we saw in responses. So our software goes through and looks for key themes. So the five most common things that were discussed, and what I did was we just pulled a few comments to give you a sense. The most popular piece of the respondent was that respondents expressed support for option three. So here were just a few that were selected and for no specific reason other than they represented many of the comments. So I see this as the best option for our community, they like the location of the current school, as well as freshmen being included. As far as people supporting option three, we consistently saw that the idea of a 9-12 high school was important to your community and not breaking away and having a 10-12 school and putting your ninth grader somewhere else. While some respondents would support auditorium improvements, others didn't see the need. So that was second most common comments were regarding the auditorium. No additional changes were needed. We do not need new auditorium, fancy football fields and tracks. And then other comments in support of the auditorium. So while we're showing you the comments, we want to make sure that you process the fact that the data that we're providing, that is statistical data, is really where you should focus your attention. But always reading all comments is certainly important. Respondents preferred areas one, area two, or the dog track site if indeed a new school were built. You can see the comments there. Area two makes the most sense. Areas one or two would be best since they're centrally located. Many respondents felt that there was too much of an emphasis placed on sports. That's a consistent theme we see across communities, so I wouldn't get too excited about that. And again, these were just select comments. You will get a comment theme analysis and you'll have access to all the comments and they'll be on the district website. And then there was the concern regarding an increase in taxes. So based on this information, our data would tell you that looking at option three is where your community is most likely to support. And a referendum that lands around 85, 86 million would most likely pass. This one? And again, while the comments are really important, think about that quantifiable data. Yep, no?
Alright, now at this time, we're going to offer public any comments. I know that the, what's that? Is there, has anybody asked for a note card to be able to comment? Yes, we actually started incorporating the comments into, or identifying the people who comment in our minutes now, Kurt. So that's been a change. Sure, please. State your name and where you're from and then whatever your comments are.
My name is Kurt Wees and I live in North Hudson, actually. Well, I got a question though for you, Jamie. So I haven't been to a school board meeting in a while, but in the past, it's been a situation where with the previous superintendent where you had to state your comments and then you had to sit down and there was no interaction. But I was hoping if I could ask a couple of questions of your guest and have, if I could just ask her and then, and then ask another question, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that this is a special meeting. We'll allow a little bit variance. We haven't had tons of people, yeah, tons of people offering the comment cards at this point. So if you have a couple of questions, I think this is a good time for those to be answered. So go ahead.
Well, and again, I apologize for being late. I had to do, I got a furnace that's malfunctioning, so I don't have much time. When you do your surveys for something like this, do you sometimes see that perhaps the people who might be in favor of construction are more likely to fill out the survey rather than someone, are they perhaps more motivated to fill out that survey than someone who might be opposed to construction or might, don't really want to take the time to fill out the survey? Do you see any of that or?
So we've been doing this since 2002 and we've seen that, no, we've seen that our data strongly correlates with how a referendum, how a referendum will fall based on the data. Again, I mean, we're not in support of any of the options. Our job is just to collect data on where a community sits.
Sure, sure.
And really, the other piece would be, you know, we could see that we had representation from all your municipalities. We had representation across all age groups, good representation across all age groups. So we feel pretty comfortable with our response rates.
Do, the other question I have for you on your, on your survey in general is how do you make sure that someone who fills it out, especially someone who fills it out online, is actually a resident of our community?
Well, they click that they're a resident and whether, if they're not, basically, we know that one or two people that may not be a resident in the community that are completing the survey. One, they'd have to get an access code, so someone would have had to give them a survey. Because that was the only way to complete the survey was with that independent access code.
So they would call the school district to get that?
Right. So the survey was mailed to every resident in the district. And that had an independent access code. So then if someone who didn't get one or needed a second survey for an adult in their home, they would call.
They could call, but then nobody made a verification if they were a resident.
Well, if they were mailing it out to a household, I'm guessing.
No, I mean, someone could call the school. No, I mean, someone could call the school district and say, I didn't get a survey, or I need another survey, and they would just give the code, right?
Could somebody lie? Absolutely, they could lie to us.
Well, I'm just asking, because I know someone who filled it out from St. Louis, so.
Yeah, so, so yes, yeah, so yes, they could, they could lie about it. You know, we ask, are you a Hudson resident or the district? Yes, I am, okay, here's your survey code, but yes, they absolutely could lie about it.
We also know that by sheer statistics, if there's one or two people that would complete a survey that don't truly fit where they say they do, it's not going to swing your results.
Now, the last question I have for you, and I do appreciate, Jamie, I will say this much. I have seen, just kind of, this is not, you know, having anything to do with this survey or what's going on here, but I've seen some significant positive changes in our school district since the arrival of our new superintendent. I just want to state that publicly, that it's been, he's been, Nick has been a refreshing change for us in Hudson. So I just want to state that publicly. The last question I have for you is, you said that question three would most likely pass. You don't have any idea as far as the percentage, or as you look at the data, is it a close? I mean, obviously you have percentages, your statistical models show that it's a close call, or is it, it's a wide passage, or?
So we know that seventy-five to eighty percent of your community falls in that non-parent, non-staff group. And so if forty-five percent of those residents were in support, either voting, you know, who told us that that was yes or probably yes, and then we looked at your parents as representing about twenty-five, you know, that other twenty-five percent, because we put your staff at a real small percentage. We believe that it would be, option three would pass, it would be close, but we're probably fifty-three percent support of your referendum. If our, if our statistical methodology played out, that's what we believe. And when we then went and also did the tax tolerance question, it aligned almost perfectly with what that other question said.
Okay, because I guess the question for, for you would be, because I've been heavily involved, you don't know that, but I've been heavily involved in several of the referendums that have passed through here. Maybe that's the wrong term, that have come before the voters, because several of them have not passed. And what I've seen is that, and what I'm thinking is that perhaps if there is a vigorous effort and a well-organized, well-funded vigorous effort to defeat the referendum, that that might change your numbers, right? I mean, it depends, I mean, I've, you know, I've looked at referendums around the state and, and what I, what I have seen, and I've talked to some people around the state, is if there's a vigorous effort, you're, you're, you're calling it a close call right now without a vigorous effort, well-funded effort to defeat the referendum. So that, I'm just saying, do you think that that might alter that a little bit?
Yeah, so I'm not here to say I'm for a referendum or I'm against a referendum. Our job is to say, the district moved through many, many options of facility options for your community, for your schools. They settled on three, we said, let's see where your community is at as far as what they support. Then we said, let's dig a little deeper and look at tax tolerance and based on that information, and this is where we're at.
But I'm, but my question is, would you think that that might impact your numbers? If there was a well-funded, well-organized vigorous effort to defeat the referendum?
I'm guessing that anything could impact our numbers.
Because what I'm seeing and what I have seen is that it's very vague. The, 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 the numbers are out there, but the information is very vague. I haven't seen, you know, what are the specific needs? What is it that you need? Because I, when I talk to people, they have told me that if the school district actually came to them and said, this is, this is what we need, and that's what I tried to tell Jamie after the last referendum. There, I think that the community would fully support, you know, fixing the high school's specific needs, this needs to be done, that needs to be done. But what I would caution against is saying that this is how much we think we can get, so we're going to shoot for that. Because I, I think that that is a recipe for disaster, that is a, a, a solution in search of a problem, and I've said that from the beginning. So I guess I would encourage the board to take a look at that and not, not look at this survey as something that, to hang your hat on, when there hasn't been any kind of vigorous debate and anybody to look at, you know, what's taking place. So that's, I mean, for what it's worth, that's all I had. And I do appreciate the, allowing me to have interaction with your guests.
Absolutely, Kurt, you're welcome.
Can I, can I, can any of us ask him a question?
Well, he, he needs to go to his, his furnace, I guess, it's a malfunctioning, but if you want to have, I'm fine with if you have one question for him.
I heard you say that you, you would like to see the board identify what our need is. So can I interpret that to mean that if we, as a board, identify specifically what we need for the high school, what we need for our issues, that we could depend on you to get behind it? If we identify it adequately?
Well, I would say this, Sandy, and I, I've talked to Bruce, Bruce and I have had first, right, we've had a couple of conversations. I, you know, just so you know, I'm a huge supporter of education, I think many of you know that I volunteer at Trinity, a lot of hours at Trinity Lutheran, so I'm a huge supporter of education. And I talked to a lot of people in the community that voted no in the last referendum. And if you did come up with specific items that needed to be fixed and that there was a reasonable cost, I think you're going to find there's widespread support across the community to get that done.
I would call on you.
And, and, and I mentioned to Bruce in our last conversation, Bruce, you remember, you and I spoke and I said I'd lead the charge to pass a referendum of that type of nature. So I, I just, you know, I think the community found that the last referendum was way out of bounds and I'm glad that that was defeated, but it's not to say that we need to do something at the high school. I've been in every school, I know that the high school needs work, so, and we can do some things. And I think there is a broad-based support to get some things done for a reasonable cost.
Appreciate your questions, Kurt, and your comments, and also want to let you know that, two, we're going to have another meeting, special meeting on December fifteenth. We're still two months away, roughly, from even coming up with a referendum question.
Sure.
So, but the survey was a very critical part to this and something that was months in the, in the making. So we're definitely going to take into account, you know, the questions, so appreciate your time.
Yep, thanks, I appreciate it.
And, you know, I'll give a few minutes for those people that might also want to do another comment card or make a comment, you're welcome to do that. I do have a follow-up question for Sue based on Kurt's last question. And Kurt is a fellow resident, we were, we lived in North Hudson at time and we were neighbors, so I've known him for almost the whole twenty-five years I've been in Hudson. And his question, you know, was about could these results be impacted by a vigorous, get out the no vote effort or so forth? But you've been doing this since two thousand and two, you've done it for hundreds of schools, hundreds of referendums. And generally, when do you do these surveys in relation to when the referendum runs? Is it this time where we're roughly five months out yet from the actual referendum itself?
Yes.
And is there an education piece that goes with those next five months? Do you find that some lack of information for voters, lower information voters, when you're five or six months out from a referendum as opposed to when it might be right there pending around the corner?
Well, if he was still here, I would have a comment that since two thousand and two, we've never done a sixteen-page survey before. And I felt very strongly that we provided a significant amount of baseline education for survey respondents and for your citizens. And so our data would also tell us that there's probably another twenty to thirty percent of residents that read the survey and interacted with your survey and had a relationship with your school district and learned information that didn't complete the survey. So when we looked at the, those three slides that talked about priorities, when I said this was your top third of priorities, that was your middle piece and that was your bottom third, that page alone was an opportunity for us to educate that these were identified needs that you had found in your school district. So there was that page on the survey and then really we walked through all the different options and identified solutions as well as, you know, why the district needed those. So I do feel that we've created a baseline of education and then you'll be able to build on that based, depending on which option you select and how you move forward.
May I ask Sue a quick question? So Sue, there were seventeen hundred thirty-one surveys taken. How many surveys did we need for this to be statistically relevant, or how large a sample?
So we see that once we lock in at about four hundred respondents, that there's statistical significance and that needle moves very little, especially when we can do, you know, we can break out those groups into those different pieces. So you had over four hundred non, and not only did you have more than four hundred respondents, but you had more than four hundred non-parent, non-staff respondents. So we feel very comfortable with your results.
So if we had twenty false surveys, would that have any kind of statistical relevance?
In fact, my partner and I went in today and we did some, because Nick and I had talked about, you know, did the needle move at all? And we can go into our system and look at the daily breakdown of where the averages sit. And literally, when it hit about four hundred and ten surveys, which, you know, it was the day that it jumped from three seventy to four ten, so there wasn't a stopping point, but your average, you know, landed, you had a statistical average and it, it moved point nine between that four hundred and ten respondents and that seventeen. So there wasn't much movement, which was just affirming, I think, for us to know that indeed our statistical data is accurate.
Okay, we have another assistant, and I just want to remind board members, you'll have your opportunity when we relax Robert's rules to be able to ask who's going to stay and, and answer more questions about the survey. So we have Stacy Bartlett from the town of Hudson.
Yeah, hi, I'm Stacy Bartlett. I have two boys, one in the elementary, one in the middle school. And I had a question for you as well. As far as the percent of non-parent and non-staff, how many of the respondents were non-parent, non-staff? Because it could be that you only had a few and they, you know, were very negative and that would be, that would skew the statistics, so I just wanted to make sure that it was a comparable amount to the other three, the other two groups.
We knew that we were at, what, forty-nine percent were, remember when we, early on?
Well, I thought that was one of the early slides, but I wasn't sure, so that's why I wanted to ask.
You win the prize for the most disaggregation Hudson. You get a lot of prizes during the survey process. Oh, we're way up, sorry. I think it wasn't at forty-nine percent, though?
It's like section one or something like that.
Yeah, here we go. Hudson, children. So we knew that ninety percent were employees and that.
Or were not employees.
Were not employees and that forty-nine percent were not parents.
Good, thanks, that, that helps me out a lot. I'm not really sure where the board goes from here, and I suppose you don't know yet either, but to me, it looks like option three is the only viable option. And so I'm wondering, will you then separate that into two possible referendums with different?
Question?
I don't know, I don't know what the word is, sorry, I'm kind of nervous standing up here. Different opportunities for the community. And, and I'll tell you a couple of things that I liked and didn't like, not that my voice is the only voice, but it's the only one right now, so. I, I, I voted for option three, just so you know. I voted for it for a variety of reasons, I liked the central location of the high school. You probably remember my face as the, we must do a nine, twelve girl from the last meeting. That's super important to me and I really think that you will regret having a ten through twelve. So whatever option you look at going forward, I hope that it will stay a nine, twelve. You're going to end up spending money for busing ninth graders up and tenth graders down, and I speak from a lot of experience. I like that option number three has, limits the number of transitions for students in the secondary level from two to three, or from three to two, I'm sorry, compared to the other options. Personally, I'd like to see more money allotted to the middle school renovations. I think that technology infrastructure fell kind of in the middle and that's a real big deal. And a lot of schools nationwide are lacking in the infrastructure, so I'd like to see more money allocated there. Any changes to the middle school, for me, must maintain that house concept. Having been in education for twenty-plus years, having a child at the middle school, that's probably the most successful house model that I've ever seen in all of my experience with education. So please do whatever you can to maintain that, whether it's changes to the building or whatever. I did have a question on number three, and that is the additional operating costs to be assumed by the district are approximately fifty percent less than they were for options one and two, and I didn't understand why that was. Do you know why that is?
I, I can handle that on a high level and if we, the biggest thing is by having option one or two, you add another attendance center. So you add additional administration, office staff, additional square footage, which would include additional custodial staff, because the square footage increase would be greater than option three, additional utility cost. And so all those things kind of go into a formula Tim has put together to get our, to get our ranges, but that's predominantly the reason. Some positions could be shared, some positions would transfer from one building to the other, but some you just can't do that with.
That makes sense, because we're making use of the space that we have.
Absolutely.
I just, I didn't see that as I was looking through it, so thank you for that clarification.
You bet.
I'm a scientist, I, I teach science and that's my major in my background. As I look at this, and I love data, I'm a big data geek, but I, I, I think the intent was good, but I wonder if other people may have the perception that there really was only one option and that would be option number three. I felt like it was a little bit pigeonholed as the survey was written, because for me, ten through twelve was never an option, which meant that there was only one option for me, and that was nine through twelve. I also know that we just spent a whole lot of money on our labs in the high school. That makes option three a pretty obvious choice to me, and it's the cheapest. And I, that's the one that most concerns me. I, I just don't want that choice to be selected simply because it's the cheapest. And that goes back to what the last guy had to say, which was, we shouldn't pick a number, a money, a dollar amount and then say, figure it out, and I don't care if that's a high price or a low price. So I don't, I just don't want that to be, well, that's the cheapest, so we do need some stuff. So I'm just here to tell you that I personally am willing to pay a hundred and twenty-five, or whatever it was. I, I would go to a hundred and twenty-five million, and I understand that that's not for everyone. I bought my house and I knew what the taxes were going to be and I know what the value of education is to our property values. And so for me, it is the cheapest option. I wouldn't be opposed to if you split it into two options, maybe even adding more to one of the options just to see, you know, where did the nine through twelve play in there? How, how do those factors fit in? Because there were a lot of variables, but option three was the one that really had specific variables that didn't apply to the other two, so that's all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, any other comment cards from the public? Looks like the answer to that is yes, and we're getting, getting one card filled out right now.
Hello, Chris Frost, Town of Hudson. Just a couple of comments, like the speaker before me, nine through twelve is the only option. I mean, if you look at this data across the country, I was reading some reports even sitting here waiting today. Since the nineties, people have been pushing to get rid of the ten through twelve schools. I was reading a recent article in California how it was almost an op-ed making fun of the fact that they still had four schools in the state that were ten through twelve. So to me, they're high school students, they're going to be judged as high schoolers, that's where they belong. The concern I have, similar actually and probably to the rarity, I have, I would be one of the people on that data set that my daughter's not. that, my daughter's not in school yet, but my wife and I moved here for a reason, is to grow a family here. We wanted to be outside the city and Hudson was a great place to us. I have a unique background of having a father who has been the director of facilities for a city about the size of Hudson for over the last thirty years and I've been talking back and forth with him about this. And a concern I have is, when you are going to add on to aging infrastructure, it sounds great, it's cheaper, but in the end, we always end up paying for it. I also had the opportunity three weeks ago to be with, through our business, with three of the largest design build contractors across the country and asking them questions about this. And the same thing, they said, it sounds great, but in ten years, they're going to be asking you for more money. So I guess, what I'd like to know is, I couldn't make all of these meetings and I get, sometimes you can only get certain things passed. But what happened with the options, I know, and I think one of the first meetings I went to, someone brought up, and this has been a trend in some areas of the country, where you can build on your existing land, you can build a two-story building and quarantine that area while you're using existing infrastructure and things like that. So I guess my question for someone on the panel would be, how much emphasis was put on a brand-new nine-through-twelve school? Because I didn't see that in an option really during the last go-around and then I don't see it as an option that came out of this most recent data set.
All right, Mr. Faust, I think that's an excellent question. What I would do is, we have our expert here, Matt Walpert from Bray Architects is here. And what I'd do is, when we get to the board discussion area, is ask that question. Did you have any follow-up to that or any other points?
No, my point is more so, I'd like to see some data on that as a viable option because I have, my concern would be over the long haul, we're going to pay for this anyway and we're going to be back here in five to ten years saying, the high school is not adapting well to these additions, the HVAC, all that infrastructure is not going to work. And through some personal connections, history has said that's the, that's the big concern I have. To me, it's the only option, if that's, the data supports that that's the best option, I'd be likely to support because it is a nine-through-twelve option.
And great, I appreciate that, actually, I shared your concern. And that's why we organized tours of the Minnetoka High School, which is an example of a building that was built in nineteen fifty-two and has had more than a dozen additions over the years. And Matt can talk much more eloquently and expertly on that subject. But we have expressed those concerns, we'll get an answer for you, if you don't mind waiting for when we get to that portion of the meeting.
And one other, following up with the speaker before too, is, one thing that I struggled with the survey is the emphasis going to a referendum on technology. Kids today are going to be more, I mean, when we bring someone in, our company's a technology search firm for large Fortune 500 companies and their ability to understand and use technology, I'd like to see how that's going to be outlined in the referendum and it'd be a recommendation, I guess, to see where that comes in because it's, when it's just a big number in front of you to vote on and not seeing how those opportunities are going to play into their education because in the end, the building's one thing, but if we don't give them the tools inside, it's really irrelevant, so.
Excellent, thank you for your comments. Next one up, Adele Dolan.
Adele Dolan from Hudson Township. I had the interesting privilege of being at that meeting where you went through all the twenty-two different options. And it was really enlightening and I have to confess that I was a little more in favor of the ten-through-twelve. I had been in a nine-through-twelve myself, but in looking at a new building and then how to use the existing middle school and the existing high school to fill in those gaps, it seemed to work better with the ten-through-twelve and either one works. But I've been in Hudson since we took sixth grade out of the elementary school and the middle school was a big deal. And now that middle school house concept is just taking over the country. And I think Hudson has been on the cutting edge of a lot of changes. I think any referenda that have passed have been worked on very hard. At that meeting when they said if the whole school board is really behind it, you have a much better chance of things passing. I think that happened, I think the community was well-informed. It makes me sad to see that people who are not affected by these buildings the most are the most numerous in our community. Parents, students, staff are what, what'd you say, forty-five percent? How many are not affected one way or the other by that?
Seventy-five to eighty percent.
It makes me sad that, I know many of them are on fixed incomes, I know that's a problem, but many of them are not. And I, it makes me sad that they aren't looking ahead. One faculty member had said he had an uncle who was on the committee that built the high school and he said, yeah, what would you have done differently? And he said, we would have made it bigger. And so I too have concerns about building on an aging infrastructure when we could get something with our money that would be prepared to go ahead. So I'm, we can't do nothing and it gets more expensive the longer we wait, but it's too bad we can't encourage people to want just a little bit more than option three.
Thank you for your comments, we have another speaker? Ryan Carey.
Good evening, just a bit of perspective, well first of all, Ryan Carey, Troy Township, three young children, five and under. Also born and raised in Hudson and I speak to you tonight just to offer a bit of perspective from that standpoint. I went to St. Pat's through eighth grade and then transitioned into ninth grade into the public school system. At that time, my ninth grade class was the last ninth grade class to be the eight-and-nine building. And for those of you that haven't been in Hudson that long, eight-and-nine used to be, of course, where the, before the link was built, more the red brick building and then of course, the link was built in my ninth grade year to combine the nine, nine through ten. Obviously, at that time, there must have been some reason why it was believed to be important to get nine through twelve all in one building. I don't know the reasons, but apparently, you know, it was done back then for a reason. And folks would ask me what I thought about being in an eight-and-nine building versus being in the nine-through-twelve building. And I have to say that I, in reflecting back on it and looking at it, I do think there is a, there is significant importance in having nine-through-twelve together. I think that the culture in the eight-and-nine building was much different than it was the following year when you had nine-through-twelve together and it was, it was a, it was a positive impact on the ninth grade class. I think behaviors changed, I think they felt more inclusive in terms of the high school and I think that was, that was a good, a step in the right direction. So while I initially was very in favor of new construction, the fact that we can't, or apparently are not proposing something that would include nine-through-twelve, I think that, that option three becomes the best option. I also think that folks out there seem to think that option three is sort of a, I don't want to say a failure, but a compromise one that we shouldn't make. And I think that if we're going to get enough people behind option three and option three is the best for our district, it needs to be stated with as much certainty as possible that option three can be done and done right and be a fix that can last for a long time and something to be proud of. And I think that folks need to understand that I do believe, from what I'm hearing and you folks have put in countless hours, that you wouldn't have put an option for us if it couldn't be done right. So I think that message needs to get out there with facts to support it, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, is there any other cards then that we have or anyone else that wanted to say anything at this time? Right, very good, then moving on to topics for action, we have one item to address while we are still in Robert's rules and it's personnel hires, changes, retirements, resignations, non-renewals, terminations and leaves. These come up at various times throughout the year, sometime consecutive months, but the fact that the timing is such, it's important to address this before December, I understand. So Andrea, do you have any comments that you need, Andrea is our human resources director, so.
No, it's just timely at this point in time since there was this meeting to move forward on some of the hiring as well as some of the resignations.
And the board received their packet of those proposed retirements and replacements and so forth, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I presume it's a moveable to approve the recommendations?
I make a motion to approve the personnel hires, changes and retirements as indicated in our package, is that better?
Thank you.
And I second that.
Motion by Sandy, second by Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Now I'll entertain a motion to suspend Robert's rules and we'll get into the work session.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Bruce, second by Rob, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we are now out of Robert's rules. Whoops, sorry, at this time I introduce Matt from Bray to come up front here and have further discussion then among board members about the survey results. And I guess, appropriate to start with our question from Mr. Faust then, and it's a question for you, Matt, would be the, the infrastructure question, this adding on to aging infrastructure and do we have assurances that, of course, I know that the answer probably is depends on how you do it. If you do Band-Aids, it may not be something that lasts for seventy-five years, but this is going to be an option that I'm going to be hesitant to support unless we have a really long-term solution that can be accomplished here.
Yeah, that's a good question and thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. The budget as they're currently proposed really looked at a full renovation of the existing building from the core infrastructure perspective, so plumbing, HVAC, electrical, technology, infrastructure. Those were four key areas that were strongly considered when we looked at the existing building. So the proposal is to remove the existing systems, remodel bathrooms, not just to put tile over what's there, but to remove the systems, remove the slab, replace the plumbing. So this really did look at a wholesale upgrade of those key infrastructure systems with the goal being to limit the amount of work you would have to do on this building moving forward. That being said, it's a building, right, it will age, you will have to continue to maintain it and clean it and invest in it over time. But the proposal as currently positioned does invest heavily in those key areas of plumbing, HVAC, electrical, technology, infrastructure in terms of wiring. It also includes dollars to replace exterior windows and doors and roofing. So it also looks at the shell of the building itself to try to shore up any deficiencies in that area. One consideration always as you look at the way a building is built and as we look further at this building, it is built pretty well. A fair amount of that building has a cast-in-place concrete frame, so it's a sturdy frame. It was not built, I'll say economically, it was not built as a short-term solution for the community. That being said, does it need a bit of attention and some investment made? I think no doubt, as the needs assessment suggested. But in general, the building is of sound construction. It also has on the western half, if I can say that, the single-story end of the building where the science labs are and things, that has terrazzo floors throughout that building. That, for example, is basically a lifelong solution to flooring and very difficult and challenging to get in new construction given the sheer cost of it. So that's a great example of a type of flooring that we wouldn't want to replace. Even when we remodel, we want to maintain that, keep it in place as much as possible because it's a great long-term solution. So I think it's appropriate for people to have concerns related to that. I think it is critical that we continue to remind them of the board's desire to make this a long-term, I will say, like new high school from the perspective of making investments in the key areas of infrastructure, technology and it really will be impactful and when you walk in, it will, with the exception of the flooring in general, it'll look like a significantly different building. So I hope that helps and hopefully that puts your mind at ease a bit.
May I do a follow-up question on our citizens' comments? Matt, when they did the labs, I remember in some of the photographs that we got to see of the labs being updated that they did run into some unexpected, I think, sub-structures and so on. So would it be a fair question or a fair assumption that literally rehabbing the current high school, we really have three floor plans that we're having to rehab? Because there's the connecting portion and then the west structure and the structure on the east.
Correct, in general, I'll say the two-story ramped section of the building was currently considered in the early concept as the academy end, so the freshman academy and the health academy on that end of the building. And then the more traditional academic delivery would be science labs, the two remodeled where they remain, additional labs upgraded and improved in that area along with then an addition for new classrooms as well. So there's definitely different scopes and they are currently budgeted as different scopes because the section of the building with terrazzo, as I said, we wouldn't be looking to replace that, of course. But the areas that do not have as high quality of a flooring in, we have budgeted for removal and replacement.
And then just one more. So when we do a budget for rehabbing and adding additions and so on, do we put a percentage, do we plan for a percentage of costs for quote-unquote, the unexpected?
Yes, there is a contingency included in these. Yep, there is a construction contingency included here as well.
So if I may, Matt, it's one thing to invest in infrastructure and I think we all believe the high school needs a lot of attention in that regard. But from a continuity standpoint, and I think Sue is touching on it a little bit, there are people in the community, people that I've talked to, that are concerned that we can invest in all this infrastructure, but, and I, I keep hearing this, so I'm going to use it. It's sort of like putting lipstick on a pig and that's the last thing that the community wants. And so with this process, how are we going to ensure the community that we're going to be able to address the continuity within this potentially eighty-five million dollar budget? Plus, we have to touch the middle school, by the way.
Yeah, correct, no, that's a good question and a bit of that is going to come down to us further providing more detail and more information if the board elects to proceed with this option through the referendum process. We've talked a little bit about that concern and we probably would need to help the community with kind of some before and after imagery, a photo of a space along with a rendering next to it so people could get a sense of how transformative this renovation could be. So that would be one tool as an example that we would propose offering. The other part is going to be making sure that we detail out and provide detailed estimates for the community on where the dollars are going to be invested and how they're going to be invested. There's no doubt that whenever you remodel a building, you are playing a bit with some limitations that are there. But I think as you saw from the survey, it would have been, if the community said we like option three but we would support a much higher tax tolerance, maybe we'd be having a different discussion. So I think it's interesting and it was touched on earlier, we have some clients right now who are struggling with great solution, community really supported the solution they brought forward, but they didn't support the price tag that came with it. So as Sue said, you've got a nice alignment right now of those two things, what appears like the community will support. Now we have to make sure that we maximize the investment of those dollars in the high school and the middle school in a manner that the community feels comfortable with. And that will take a fair amount of education and documentation over the next roughly two months as we lead up to a referendum, if you consider one, and then definitely from that point through April to educate the community in a more broad sense.
Thanks.
A couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit about a transition? Like how that would work, how you've worked, because there were a lot of people that asked me questions throughout this process on option three, like, you know, are you just going to be in, you know, prefab? What, how is it going to work? So I think it'd be good to speak to that, just at least at a high level at this point in time, understanding, you know, all of the plan isn't done, but.
That's a great question and we have done many, many projects similar to this over the years and many of them do involve a lengthier series of additions and renovations. And so the budgets that they, as they were proposed, do look at a longer period of what's called general conditions in the budget. So general conditions are what the contractors charge to be on-site, generally on a monthly basis. So we're looking at this as being a longer process than a new building, which is reflected in the budgets to date. So the general thought is, build the addition, of course, new, that will give us some additional academic space and that new classroom space will become, I'll say, the swing space. So we will move classrooms and teachers into that new classroom space while we're going back in and systematically and surgically remodeling the rest of the building. I will say, if the board commits to option three moving forward, we will provide a detailed phasing plan with how, which, so the community can see graphically how we generally envision that phasing occurring. But you're right, there is a significant amount of engineering in detail post-refendum that would have to ensure that a phasing plan is feasible and doable. But we have no doubt that it is, they don't have the specifics at this point, but having done dozens of projects similar to this in complexity, I know we will find a solution.
Okay, and then Sue, on the survey results, when we first talked about this, one of the- When we first talked about this, one of the discussion points was you might not have the final question within your three here, but through this survey, we hope to, you know, refine that and get down to a more finite question. Does all of that come from the data itself, or does some of that come from the comments as well to get to that refined position? Is it mostly the data points? And are there recommendations that you would be able to bring forward as part of the survey results for option three, for instance, if that's the one that speaks most loudly?
Yes, I would say we'd want to look really at the data from the survey. I mean, I think the comments are always important and important for a school board to review, but that those tables that we showed do provide other great information besides just the three options. Because that really, when I talked about that top third of what the priorities of your district were, I'm going to look back to those. Again, they really align with what we saw. If you look here at what were the bottom third of priorities from your district, we saw, you know, your update, upgrade, you know, dressing room, set construction and storage. So you saw your auditorium fall to the bottom third as far as a district priority. You saw your outdoor athletic fall to a bottom third of the priority. And really, across the board of all three options, what did we see when we separated those out as far as questions? And then when we look at what were really the priorities of the district, you know, looking at your redesign and better meeting the needs of students as far as your classroom facilities, addressing roofs, windows. So this doesn't happen all the time that a district has given data back at a report that truly correlates across the whole survey, and yours truly did. And we dug and looked and disaggregated and wow, I kind of just kept going, wow, it, your community really... In our opinion, we provided, you know, we asked questions and they provided their response, but they sent a message as far as what they felt was important.
Yeah, and I've heard that, I would say consistently, because I know a number of folks that want to make sure that we're doing this right and spending the appropriate amount of money to not just slap something together. At the same time, I think folks are interested in getting our education taken care of and making sure, and I don't want it... I know we've talked about this, I think it was a number of us that commented, academics do include sports and they do include the arts, you know, so that is part of the education. But the infrastructure of the buildings more so than some of those other items that those can potentially be done at a later time. One last question around the building itself. Did any of the renovation options for three, did any of that include the opportunity for expansion at a future time? So, you know, we've talked about if we had to expand, like when we built the middle school, that was an opportunity to, you know, say, here's what we're going to do it, here's how we're going to do it. Can you maybe speak to that and how that was addressed in option three?
Yeah, it's a good question, and it did. The academic wing labeled A in the community survey plan was budgeted and would be figured to have a foundation and roof to support a future second floor if you would elect to go that way.
And off the top of your head, do you know what the square footage is on that?
Twenty-eight thousand square feet, if I remember.
Well done. Okay, thank you.
Now, don't quote me on that later, if it's actually more or less, but roughly twenty-eight thousand.
I had a question for Susan. It kind of goes back to what Stacy Bartlett was asking about, because I'm not really great with numbers myself. So the forty-nine, fifty-one split, forty-nine being non-staff, non-parents, and fifty-one being parents and so on. I'm trying to get a grip on, trying to understand the weight here of weighting of things so that people, and I'm in the category, of course, that don't have children in the school, so I'm the taxpayer resident person. But I don't understand how a value is placed, a greater value is placed on people who don't have a staff or a position or a parent-related relationship with the school. How is that weighted with more validity than, you know, than people who are quote-unquote "in the trenches," if you will, who every day have to go through coronary thrombosis in the high school as they go, as they go east, smaller and smaller hallways and so on? I, I mean, how many, I wonder in my mind, a question that there's no answer, but how many people like myself, who only recently toured the school, can adequately, you know, answer some of the questions in the survey? This is not anything personal to the development of the survey, because I thought it was excellent, and I've only heard good comments about it. Even the people who said it was a little long said it was a good survey. But anyway, I'm trying to understand that, how that relationship works. I don't know if my question's very clear.
No, your question is clear. In fact, I created a slide, assuming someone would answer that question. All right, so let's take a look. Remember, we know that seventy-five percent of your community is just like you, even though that seems, wow, seventy-five percent. So if we know that...
Is your mic on?
I'm on, I'm on. I've got a gym voice anyways. So we know that forty-five percent were yes, and that's seventy-five percent, right? And then we say that twenty-five percent of the respondents were parents, we're going to put our staff at less than one percent. We're going to do that for a couple of reasons. One, they really make up a small section of your community, despite that they're actively involved in your schools. We also know that they're most often highly supportive of referendum, so we don't want to sway the data as we move. So if we just are going to look at those non-parent, non-staff, we're going to assume that seventy-five percent of you, and that forty-five percent were in support, and that twenty-five percent of the population is parents, and sixty-three percent of that group was a yes, or a definitely yes or a probably yes, right there before we even pick up any undecideds, you were at forty-nine point five percent. While we've only talked to seventeen hundred of your citizens, we know that there's statistical significance that that mirrors what would happen if gone to a referendum. Does that help? Then we also know that if you were going to carry a third of the undecideds, you would bump that up to about fifty-four point two-five percent. So call me the night of the election, and we'll see how close we are.
Well, so...
And again, we're not in support of any of the options.
No, no, I understand that.
It's just that based on the data, this is what the data would show.
Yeah, so the survey is here to help us, board members, really understand the view of...
Exactly.
Of the, of the, you know, citizens. Okay.
All right, is that, you got your answer, question answered, then I have a question, follow-up on that. And you have your history.
Stop me, yeah.
Going back to that slide that you just showed about picking up the one-third. To me, you've got a track record here, and so you're the expert, but it would seem that if you do a good job of educating those people who don't have a good connection with the school and making the case for what are the priorities and the needs, that you could do better than picking up one-third. But looking at it the other way, if you have a very strong, well-funded, well-coordinated, no people, that it might be pessimism whether you could pick up, or optimistic that you could pick up a third. How does that play out as far as picking up that? And what do you see in the track record when you're five months out from a referendum, being able to predict this picking up of the different undecideds?
Yeah, I think those undecideds typically are responding undecided because they don't have all the information. So we assume that, you know, in that, we're being conservative when we say that a third of those undecideds are going to vote, are going to move to a yes, and we just don't want to say that a hundred percent of them or fifty percent. So we conservatively say that a third of them are going to go yes. We also know that people are Wisconsin, Midwest, Minnesota nice, right? And sometimes undecided is a easier thing to say than no, even though they know they'd probably already go no.
Okay. Well, I thought that the anonymity of the survey would help in that regard. You'd get a more true reflective of what people's opinions are and less attempt to hide their true feelings.
And I think if you look at the data, the fact that you're sitting at forty-nine point five percent on option three...
Without any undecided.
Without any undecided speaks volumes to where your community really is at right now. The fact that that aligns with when we looked at that tax tolerance question, that, you know, your option three was right at the, what, eighty-six, eighty-five million? So that aligned when we looked at what the priorities were on those first three tables when it talked about classrooms, science labs, that that aligned. I think, you know, our job is to just, you hired us to design a survey that looked at for facts, and then to gather that data and give it back to you. And I think you need to be very satisfied in the fact that you got really great information, you had a strong survey response, and your data across your entire survey truly correlated.
All right, and according with that last one, that last point about the correlating data, if we got these responses using the range of costs, that's a combined cost between remodeling the middle school and the high school for the seventy-nine to eighty-six, if we start going significantly outside of that range in some effort to do, maybe get closer to, what's the word? A very extensive renovation and top-of-the-line Taj Mahal, if you will. So we're going too high, or in an attempt to be thrifty and we try to cut twenty million off that range. What will, what, in your experience, does that do to your confidence then in the numbers?
We designed the survey based on great facts, and then we worked closely with Bray to say they could provide a like-new solution at eighty, see, I'm going to hold him to this now, at the eighty-six million with that option three. So I think we all, we all felt we could live and do what needed to be done and do it to the best of our ability at eighty-six or eighty-five, and that's why that's what we tested. So I'm working with another district right now that is like, well, there was such support at this amount, so I bet we could go more. And that isn't, that isn't what you asked us to do. You asked us to test certain numbers, we did. You can see that when you jump to ninety-five, you won't have support. So your, your community landed a certain spot, and you need to, you need to decide how you're going to use the data that you asked us to bring to you.
Final follow-up, and then I'll let other board members speak. But just with that range thing, then, and the slides, I know that there's a lot of them here. Your parents, obviously there's a huge change in our non-parent, non-staff residents between option one and option three. But just looking at option three for the parents, that is, the support for option three is sixty-three yes and twenty-five no, with twelve percent undecided. I don't know if you got that.
Hold on, here we go. This one?
Yes. All right. And then when you look back at option one for the parents, a category that I haven't qualified in for four or five years now. But there, the support among parents was much, was higher for option one in spending roughly a hundred million, the mid-range of that range. It was sixty-six yes, and yet the nos were also higher at twenty-seven, and the undecideds dropped to seven percent. So what this data is telling me is that we have parents who feel really good about wanting to have a new high school, not so sure about doing option three, but still supportive of either one. And so is that another education piece or challenge that we have with educating the parents that this is not just lipstick on a pig, to quote Rob, but rather a like-new building?
Right, but your parents were still in support of option three, right?
Right.
Right.
Jamie, I'll remind you, a Taj Mahal is a tomb.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Sue has said that before.
That's not the headline.
So I, I was, yeah, struggling for another analogy, but yes, go ahead.
It's okay. So Kurt talked about, Kurt Wees residence spoke about specifics. Now, the PST, and I know there's at least one member in the, in the audience there, you know, did a long, lengthy process to gather specifics. Can you maybe talk about how you designed each of the options? In terms of through customer, or through the feedback from the community, we then, you know, built the options and what you took into consideration, because, you know, there was a number of, of different information points, if you will, that we had gathered and put together to talk about where the deficiencies were, what the needs were at both the high school and the middle school. As a matter of fact, there was a rather lengthy document that was put together for that as well. Can you maybe talk at a high level around what some of those core areas were that you took into consideration when you were putting the price tag together for these?
Sure, and I'll start at the middle school, because it's relatively straightforward. At a minimum, the middle school was, was hoping to get one more house. So I heard multiple references to the house concept tonight, that we heard loud and clear from not only the district leadership, but also building-level leadership. So the plan as conceived would replicate a house concept at a minimum of one. They also said the other piece is a gymnasium. They're struggling with FIED usage in that building, and so that was the other, one of the other key areas of need. So the base plan for the middle school has a house, a single house, and a gymnasium included at this point in time. Again, conceptual plan, we'll be working with the board over the next month or so to figure that out further. The high school needs were, I think, a little bit more extensive, not only from the infrastructure perspective, as we talked about earlier, but from, I'll say, the general building experience level. Corridor widths, connection from one side of the building to the other, cafeteria size, availability of natural light come to mind. So the solution, as it's currently conceived in its very conceptual form, has a linking corridor, so kind of the outdoor corridor, as it's currently affectionately called, would actually become enclosed. It would become a corridor connecting both ends of the building. Another feature of it would be removing all the lockers from the, I keep saying it's the western half, the left side of the plan, the single-story end of the existing building, removing all the lockers from those corridors and placing them into the new section of the building in one of two manors, either locker bays where we group lockers together, or in a much wider corridor that would support both lockers and circulation, a back and forth. So that not only frees up locker space, but it actually makes existing corridors wider, which was a big plus. All of the doors on that end of the building swing out into the hallway, so when we had two doors swinging, it actually reduced the width of that corridor even further. This proposal would replace all of those doors and swing them into the classrooms. There were two classrooms, maybe three, that were added. I, we can't even tell exactly when from looking through plans. In that end of the building, the single-story end, that eliminated a small light courts or courtyards that were providing natural light deep into that end of the building. The concept at this point suggests removing those, that we get that natural light back to those areas of the building. Cafeteria being undersized is solved, or proposed to be solved with an addition of a new cafeteria. The kitchen servery space would be expanded into the current cafeteria space to provide not only more space for food prep, but also for student, delivery of food to students. So those are a few of the major areas. I'm sure there were more. And I think moving forward, if the board proceeds with option three, we would do a detailed summary of the need as identified during either previous studies or the Bray study, along with how we propose to resolve those needs.
And that also takes into consideration, you know, 21st century learning. Can you maybe talk to technology infrastructure, it was brought up by a couple of folks tonight, and at the middle school, right? Because that wasn't addressed, at least, you know, one additional house, one more gym. And again, I know those are very, very thirty thousand feet. But maybe through the analysis, if you could just, from what you recollect, totally putting you on the spot here tonight, I apologize for that, but... There are good questions that were brought forward tonight. I just want to, I want to hear your thoughts on those points again.
Yeah, and I will say that the, to be clear, the dollars as conceived from a technology perspective are for infrastructure, not for hardware or software. So that's a kind of a distinct difference. We would be suggesting that new data cabling, full Wi-Fi access, I think you have much of that throughout your buildings currently. So that may not be a significant, it may not be a new thing, but it would be new wiring, state-of-the-art CAT six E, I will say. I'm probably wrong on that, because every time I get up to speed, then it's usually one version of CAT faster. But whatever the latest version of CAT cabling, as we repull everything, would be done. Wi-Fi, again, everywhere. The bigger question when it comes to access to fiber and the speed of access, I think that's a bigger question for the district's technology people. I don't know what size pipe you have currently coming to the school. We could solve that if we need to with this referendum, with investment in additional fiber. Now would be the time to do it, if we need to do it, and excavate for it. Now would be the time to do it, if we need to do it, and excavate for it. We're gonna be disturbing the site. Uh, so the next step is, we've always been holding a December first meeting. We don't know why we were holding it, or which option, or if any option we were gonna be looking at until the board met tonight. Uh, but we do have the first reserve of civil engineers, plumbing, HVAC, electrical engineers, to meet onsite at the high school with your technology team, your operations team, to really jump into the details of whichever solution, uh, or solutions you as a board decide. So technology will be one of the key areas, uh, that the electrical engineer will be working on to provide more detail moving forward.
And from a hardware perspective, uh, Mr. Grambo, uh, over the next couple of years, we've got, uh, an expansion where we'll have all six through twelve? Is that three-year rollout, or what's the, maybe speak to that real quick?
Uh, certainly, so if you remember, last year, we delayed the rollout or slowed it by just rolling out to one grade level, so now we're operating at sixth grade and seventh grade, the plan, then we need to add eight through twelve. And, um, the, the plan as it was written would have us going in two-year, two-grade levels at a time.
Okay.
So we'd be eight, nine, ten, eleven, and then twelve, but then we've got a little flex room, and, and then that, uh, obviously is open for conversation.
And that's, you know, essentially the Chromebook platform that we've implemented thus far, and?
Yeah, I hesitate to lock into a single device, but at the time, that's how we're trending. Of course, you know, tomorrow, we might get an email saying the next best thing is out there, and we'd have to reconsider it. As it stands, Chromebooks are the direction we're heading.
Thank you.
Sure. Sue, quick, uh, question for you. I don't have a slide number here, but it, the, the slide says, knowing this information, what advice would you give the school board? And overall, seventy-one percent of the, of all residents indicate pursue a referendum. Yet we were just talking about option three, and without the undecided, uh, you had said forty-nine and a half percent, is that right, would support? Forty-nine and a half percent would support option three?
Oh, right, right.
Okay, just, thanks.
Right, yep, okay, I had to, you were going in two different places, yeah. So really, you know, when this question was asked, we were just giving some basic information, you know, on this page on the survey, it was, here's where the district is at right now, what advice do you have? And oftentimes, we, we, oftentimes, we ask this question, um, in a community that's coming off of a failed referendum. So we, we basically want the community to say, we're giving you permission to continue having the conversation, that we told you no, but we know we need to do something. So that's why we asked that question, because if this would come back and say, do nothing at this time, or need, you know, not sure, need more information, that would be a message to you that you need to stop, slow down, and, um, you know, look at where your community is at right now, because they're not interested in, in essence, hearing from you again. But your, your community very strongly is saying, yes, we know, um, we know you, we need to have the conversation, we know we need to go forward.
Thank you, and follow-up question, I guess. With the seventy-one percent versus the forty-nine and a half percent that showed with option three, you know, we appeared to be, based on some of the feedback, you know, the eighty-five million dollars, the, uh, reusing the high school, the compromise, appear to be hitting on many of the key things that the community's been asking about.
Yes.
Do you have any insight as to what that twenty-one, twenty-two percent difference is?
So, you know, those folks may be people that supported option, um, one or two, you know, and, or they didn't support any of the three options that were here. We, I mean, we could dig in and look at, so, you know, where, where did those people that said yes here? Where did they fall? And some people could have supported all three options, that they were willing to support option one, they were willing to support option two, they were willing to support option three. And someone could have answered, you need to go to referendum, and then gotten through each of the questions, and said, but I don't support any of these three options. So the questions don't really connect, if you will. It's, it's, so that you can't really assume that the forty-nine percent, that there's people missing based on those two pieces, if that makes sense.
On this slide that you have up, would the undecideds break the same way, about two-thirds, one-third on that as well? Just looking at the purple bar, which is our non-parent, non-staff, um, would that fifty-six percent who do think this is a good time to pursue referendum be increased to roughly sixty-three percent with a third of the people who are not sure? That's a yes?
That's a yes.
I have a question, just for clarification of Sue. Uh, when you went through option one, I made some notes, and that was, I made some specific notes about the undecided votes. Uh, and I have a note here that says, I wrote it down as you said it, or this is what I thought you said. Uh, one-third of the undecided usually go to yes, and two-thirds usually go to no. Okay, and then when you got down to option three, I wrote down on another piece of paper what you said, and, and that time, I thought you said one-third goes to no, and two-thirds goes to yes.
No.
So it's the exact opposite of what I had written down before, so which one is it?
It's one-third goes yes.
One-third goes to yes, and two-thirds go to no. Okay, thank you.
That's the assumption we made.
That's just for clarification, I knew I had to have written something down wrong.
Um, I have another question, I'm loaded tonight. I have a whole thick page, but I'll ask one at a time.
Hope you're loaded with questions, yes.
Well, yeah, the other kind of loaded can come later.
Is that a first?
Anyway.
A school board member comes to a meeting and?
I, I feel like, uh, my words are getting quite twisted here, but that's okay, I can take it. Uh, anyway, uh, you know, uh, this school district is very proud of one of their recent building projects, and we have one or two people in the, um, citizens group tonight that were involved in Rivercrest coming to fruition. So with option three, well, I should just comment that Rivercrest was very successful in getting the LEEDs award, and they're all about sustainability and green and, and the lighting, and very, uh, you know, very sound, um, kinds of ideas, creative ideas that went into the building of it. So, um, with option three, how close can we come to similar, uh, goals uh, that were achieved with Rivercrest?
That's a good question, I, I wish you would have let me know that, that was allowed before meetings. I would have partaken myself.
Okay, there is the Taj Mahal thing that you guys have not learned yet.
That sent you over the edge. Um, LEED certification is definitely achievable in a building of this type. Our base building plans, as we conceive them, are LEED certifiable, I would say, so they meet a baseline expectation, uh, that the building could be certified. The budgets don't currently carry costs associated with registration, required commissioning, and the other steps that it would take to actually achieve LEED certification. But between now and the time we go to referendum, that's absolutely something, uh, that we could consider. I would say the building is very soundly green, uh, from the perspective of, of plumbing, HVAC, and electrical systems, that's the main area. Redoing the roofs, we would definitely increase the efficiency of the building envelope from that perspective. And then any site improvements would also be as sustainable as possible.
One of the things that I wanted to mention was, um, the majority of the board did tour Minnetonka High School, and, um, in looking at option three, I had significant concerns that, with the aging infrastructure and with how this building would look, and, and, and would it be something that the community could be proud of? And I'll tell you what, that's an amazing building, and they did an amazing job of increasing the size of their hallways and the circulation and adding natural light. And, um, they also had, and I can't remember the square feet of the building, Jamie, do you, is it five?
Five hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah, so it's five hundred thousand-plus square foot building on a site similar to the size of the Hudson High School site. And they had all of their athletic fields and everything there, so. And while they did a phased project, um, incorporating some of those things, I, I was very impressed when you walked through that school. It did not look like something that was hodgepodge together, or something that wasn't a significant community investment. And I don't know if any other board members want to speak to, um, their thoughts when they toured it, but it was, it was helpful to me in envisioning how option three is a viable option.
I'll speak to that, I was at Minnetonka also, and I had the same reaction that you had, Lynn. I was very surprised to see how well all of the additions flowed together, and I honestly couldn't tell in that building what was old and what was new. They've done it so well, made it look so nice, and it does not look like a Band-Aid. It, it really looks very nice. And it's not a Taj Mahal, but it's a very adequate building for what they're doing. It's on a site slightly larger by, I think, a couple of acres. I think they have forty-seven, and we have forty-three, something like that. Um, they're, they're educating thirty-three hundred students, I think, and we're educating seventeen hundred out of our building. Um, we can do something on our high school site, which is the perfect site for us. And we can do something really nice there, if the decision is to go with option three, I'm really comfortable with it.
Okay, I just wanna, um, ask our experts and, uh, board members if somebody wants, do you guys want to take a break now, uh, of a couple of minutes? Because we still have some more discussion under the work session. Um, and, um, our topics for action may not take a real long time, but we need to discuss what those might be, and if, if we want to take a few minutes and give these guys a break. I mean, what's the preference of the board? All right, just do a five-minute break then, and we'll resume in five minutes. We have also a question from the audience that I would like to get answered when we resume. At this me, at time, I'll just call the meeting back, uh, into order, and appreciate the break. Uh, this gave me an opportunity, uh, to speak with the author of, um, one of the questions from the community. But it follows up, we were discussing the results of the survey, and so this is a question that actually both Matt and Sue can answer. Um, first of all, uh, option three contained significantly different variables than one and two. One of those variables is the grade breakdown, other than the obvious difference of being twenty mi- twenty-five million-dollar difference in price as well. Um, the, uh, so Sue, based on your experience, what do you feel were the variables that made option three the one that could be favored by the majority of the residents?
So what we know, I mean, I can only go off of what we have as far as data, so, um, things that came out in the comments was the fact that it was keeping a nine, twelve together, came out loud and clear, so that would be the only difference. And then I think if we look at our tax tolerance table, um, that certainly showed where the community was willing to, um, you know, how much money the community was willing to support, and so that really landed exactly at option three. So I think you have, you know, if we, if we look at hard data, we can say that the, the dollar amount probably was one of the pieces that aligns, but I think the comments of the nine, twelve was also there.
The follow-up question to that is mine, not the audience members, but, um, given, um, that notion of the nine, twelve breakout, and one of the twenty-two options that, I, of the nineteen options we eliminated, so we had twenty-two, one of those was a brand-new nine, twelve. So it would maintain the nine, twelve grade structure. Um, and the price tag with that was in excess of a hundred and twenty-five million, I believe. Um, so would you see, it, should we have had a fourth option on this survey? And would that have made the results significantly different? Um, as far as your recommendation of how we proceed with a referendum, if option four were a new nine, twelve at a hundred and twenty-five million?
Well, testing four options wouldn't have been a good idea, because then the survey would have been twenty-some pages long, and I don't think residents would have liked that. Um, but if we look just at this table, and look at our non-parent, non-staff residents, and that, that we're only at thirteen percent would support the hundred and twenty-five million, um, I can say with pretty good confidence that if that question had, if that option had appeared on the ballot, it would have garnered some support, but not much support, and certainly not enough support to be a contender with your other options, especially with option three.
Okay, and Matt?
Yeah, I would also add, and kind of going back to your initial question, community members, and, and I've heard Bill and Sue say this many times, they most often support something they understand. And I think in general, option three is the easiest to understand. It's a grade configuration people are used to, it's a site they know, it's a traffic pattern they know. We don't have to get into this variable of which zone, I would support it, but only if it is in one of the zones of the community. So I think it, it's highly likely that, that the fact that it is a grade configuration, they know, it's buildings, they know, it's sites, they know, and is the most cost-effective, as it's currently conceived, were, were major contributing factors. The operational cost was the other piece of that one, I think, that's significantly, new nine, twelve. What do we do with the current high school? I think that operational piece was always a consideration, and would have been in this case.
Well, I think one of our criteria as a school board was, um, efficient use of our current facilities, and, um, I think that that was part of the documents that we gave the public on the night of the twenty-ninth, when we were making those decisions, so they could understand it. Now, I will ask the follow-up question from the community member was, uh, based on your comments about what you see the data shows, might the board be able to go back to the community, do another survey with two options based on option three, which is essentially a remodel? Doing one remodel, maybe at eighty-five, but adding, uh, twenty million so that we have even, um, a more like-new building, so to speak? Do you see that as something that you would recommend here?
I would not, I think we, we spoke earlier, um, in the meeting about the fact that I think, um, Bray feels very confident that the quality of what they can do for eighty-five million as far as a, um, high-quality like-new, um, is there. And, uh, one, your, your, your citizens, you had a great survey response, and your citizens have spoken, um, to go back and ask again, um, all, nearly the same questions. Um, I mean, again, if we had seen a line, if we had not seen alignment between options three response and the eighty-five million response, if we had seen, um, that you had more than fifty percent of the people were willing to go a hundred and five, but option three, I, I may say, I may be feeling different, but we certainly are not seeing that with your data. Your, your data correlates, I'll, I'll just continue to say that all night. Your data really correlates, and so there's no indication that that, um, that that would be successful or really be necessary.
Well, let me ask it, try to get into the mindset of a parent who does have kids in the district. Um, mine are all graduated now, but, um, there's a four percent drop between option one and option three among parents. Do, Matt, do you feel, in your area of expertise as the architect here, do you, we need to add twenty million to do option three properly? And I use air quotes around that, is, in or, in order to do it the right way, do we need to add twenty million to that?
I don't believe we do, and I think really the only, the difference in the twenty million as it was reflected is, is almost completely based on the fact that we couldn't reuse square footage that we currently had. And we really looked at the building, and classrooms are, uh, the majority of them in the eight, ninety to nine-hundred square foot range. That's a very typical traditional classroom size, and we wouldn't see that changing even in a new building. Now, how that classroom is supported with technology is different, and that's something we're gonna invest in, and you're gonna continue working on. The spaces that surround it and support it, collaborative learning environments, transparency, small group instruction spaces, those types of spaces are built into this renovation plan. It is why we have an addition of classrooms, because in, in order to, to create twenty-first century learning environments within the existing building, we do have to subtract a few classrooms, or remodel a few classrooms to make them, uh, more conducive to, to modern learning environments. So I really don't, and, and I think the, the area we would often see somebody say, well, spend more, would be in the areas that we found, at least in, in the survey, were the, of the least priority to the community, investing in auditoriums or athletic spaces. And so my fear would be that we, it, it kind of, again, go away from the data. We've got, I think, strong data that suggests an investment in the eighty-five million-dollar range. On-site solution, I'm, I'm hearing loud and clear tonight, I wasn't, this is a little atypical, there's a fear about how far we can go. I think we, as a design partner, need to do a better job helping you understand and see how far those dollars can go, not only from an infrastructure, but a twenty-first century learning to a technology perspective. That's imagery, that's a lot of extra effort that we will put in to make sure that the community sees and can truly understand how impactful, uh, that investment can be. If you look at the total, and I don't recall, so let's take the high end, seventy-eight million dollars, seventy-seven point nine million dollars invested in that high school would do phenomenal things, not just from the perspective of roofs and heating and windows and doors. It would do great things educationally. And I think we, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that that would be a huge improvement over, uh, the current conditions, uh, that your students are dealing with on a daily basis.
Is the eighty-five, Matt, solely for the high school, or are we talking middle school as well?
That included the middle school, so it was roughly broken down, round numbers, seventy-eight and eight million.
And that three percent difference in parent support, um, between options one and option three, that, does not concern me at all, when I look at the fact that you have twelve percent of parents sitting undecided, when in that option one, it looked like it was at seven percent. So I, um, I think, again, it's, it'll be a piece of educating parents. It doesn't surprise me that parents were, um, a little higher at wanting to support more money, because they're, this is, they're living and breathing it right now, and seeing the direct impact on their kids. But I think the messaging and educating them on this like-new option certainly is valuable.
One thing that wasn't addressed in, um, in great depth in the survey, but we tried to in our earlier stages, and that is, um, this notion of the high school that we have. We had the ATS and R report, that's, I think, almost three years old now. And then that was followed by Hoffman's analysis of that same report, and now you've had an opportunity to not only analyze their analysis, but also conduct your own walk-through of the building and so forth, and now you're gonna do it again on December first. But, um, so forth, and now you're going to do it again on December 1st. But is that option two, I'm sorry, option one, was 30 million, and that was without adding any classroom space at all? So is that kind of the ground floor, where we start with doing some kind of remodel at the high school, and that's without adding anything then?
I think that's a fair assumption, yeah. I'd have to look at the details to draw a direct correlation, but I think that is the main goal for getting the engineers back onsite. Our initial effort, and we were initially not commissioned to look at the building system, so we did rely on the ATSNR report for some of that information. The plan now, though, is if the board, again, this evening, does want to proceed with further evaluation of option three, it's critical, given the intensity with which we plan to remodel that building, that the engineers, our engineers, are here onsite, see it, experience it, and I think we will provide a lot more detail to the community, so they get a true understanding of how far those dollars would be spent.
The 860,000 that we spent to renovate four science rooms, was that wasted money, given in light of this option three?
Absolutely not. Worst-case scenario, and I can't say that enough, worst-case scenario, we would reuse and reutilize the casework and countertops that are there. The plan right now, as conceived, that, again, at a very, very high level, does not look at relocating the science department. So we would expand and remodel the science department within the same area it currently is, so that investment is not a waste at all. We'd probably put new heating systems, new lighting, new ceilings, potentially new doors onto the corridor, but that absolutely was not a wasted investment.
Okay, is there any other comments from other board members about, let's say, the survey results? Because if not, then we would have some discussion about next steps.
I have one question. Susan, in the comments or at any point in the survey, were there any indications of people inquiring about changes in the high school as related to the community, like along the lines of if we did something with an auditorium, then it would be also a space for community to have whatever conferences or plenary sessions or whatever, so that it would make, if we put money into something like an auditorium, it would have an added value?
Sure, there were indeed some comments that this is something the community needs. So the comments were there, but then we also had that quantifiable data that really showed where your auditorium, you know, where that support for the auditorium sits right now. So while, while there was support, there wasn't strong support for the auditorium.
And just to be clear, the 2.8 to 3.1 million or 2 million, whatever, roughly 3 million dollars to the auditorium, was that to add any seating, Matt?
Yeah, it looked at considering that we have not come to a definitive solution there. The majority of that investment was focused on lighting, rigging, sound system, acoustical treatments, but there are some strategies that could look at expanding seating. I would be careful to not say we're not going to double the size, for example, but if we're short a few rows, there definitely could be some affordable strategies to increase seating at the same time.
If we assume that the range of the 72 to 78 million, 75 just happens to be the midpoint of that range, is enough to create a fantastic high school, what about the middle school, and that range is 7 to 8 million? Could that be something where we could do a lot more at 13 million, and what about the infrastructure? There was talk about improving the infrastructure at the high school, what about at the middle school?
Yeah, and I guess our understanding is the middle school infrastructure is in really good shape. I mean, that building, as it was originally built, is a very, very good building. The houses are holding up great, the systems, from what we understand, are operating well, and Tim or anybody, please correct me if I'm wrong there. So the investment at this point was really more in new square footage to support the house. I would say, I think a consideration by the board of a second house or a second floor on this addition, to provide two houses' worth of expansion, would lessen the impact on Hudson Prairie Elementary as overflow space for the building, and I think if you, as a board, decide you either we free up dollars from the high school project, or you, as a board, feel strongly, I do think that a consideration of a second floor at the middle school would be a good consideration.
And I said infrastructure, I should have said also tech infrastructure, because the middle school was built before computers. It was like 92 or 93, but it was before a lot of the internet was being used. What's that?
Computers were around then.
Computers were around, but not the internet, not email or anything like that.
Not Chromebooks.
Yeah, not Chromebooks.
I would have to defer to somebody in terms of where the middle school's at. I can say the addition would have robust technology infrastructure, but I can't speak to the existing building.
All right.
Yeah, so throughout this entire process, the PST, and I know that this survey was, you know, a board-driven survey, but we did a nice job at providing transparency. So can we talk a little bit about how the results are going to be posted, where they're going to be posted, as well as the comments, because there was a tremendous amount of additional input. I would, you know, while I understand that it is not scientific data, I'd still like to see the survey comments, and I do think it'd probably be wise for us to post them as well for the community, so that everyone has a chance to see that transparency and that everything was captured and reported.
Absolutely.
That 27-page document was provided to, we, late this afternoon, I think, got it to Tracy.
Yep, we just got that document, and so we'll get it on the website. We plan on having Sue's, I think Tracy tonight was getting Sue's presentation live on the website, so everybody can look at that as well.
Awesome.
So we'll get the comments on the website, just as we've done through all the other phases, all the way up to this point as well, so people will have access to that as well.
Thank you.
And if you have interest, we've sometimes summarized in one page the results. I'm not sure we want to summarize here.
Exact sums are good, yes.
If you would like that, we can definitely support you with an executive summary, single page, here are the highlights. Now, some people don't want to do that, because they want to see the full breadth of what was there.
We felt we had to summarize.
Oh, you do?
I think we did have some executive summaries.
Yeah, so we would put both the thematic summary on the web and also then all the raw comments, so you'd be able to see, you know, what were the themes that were, you know, taken from the, all the comments. But I, I mean, I think the comments, close to 1,000, maybe more, so you'll have plenty of reading material.
27 pages.
Thanksgiving, after each turkey, it's perfect time.
Yeah.
Halftime.
And then, Matt, could you maybe just speak to, you had said it will be phased in a longer time period, and if I recall, for the previous referendum, it was about a three-year period, and I know there are a lot of people that want to get solutions in place for our kids today. So, when would we start to see some impact that would be positively received, that would ease the pain, so to speak? Can you maybe speak to that? And when you say longer, does that mean four and five years? Is it still three years? Maybe just conceptually talk through that.
It's a good question, and I will put the big caveat, it's very solution-dependent. So depending on how we grow or shrink the scope of additions or renovations will impact the construction schedules. So in general, I'll start the middle school. Most likely the middle school work, if we stick with a single-story addition, we would probably want to move that along. So an April referendum, we'd probably want to bid that project later in the year, so fall timeframe, start that construction almost immediately in fall timeframe, and have it be down, done somewhere around the start of school. Not positive that that's possible, but I think that would be our target. So the middle school would be the first thing that you would see out of the ground, and I think, given that students are there already and we're not moving them from another school, even rolling those classrooms on a month or two after school starts is still a very positive solution, and it would get students in classrooms. So that middle school would be the first piece you'd see moving. The high school would have a significant amount of design work, as you can imagine, from April through probably January, February of 2017. So ground thaw is 2017 is most likely when you would see site improvements begin, and the new construction, whatever that looks like, would begin in March or April of 2017, and it most likely would continue for about two years and three summers. So if we say summer of 17, summer of 18, and then if we would need to, finish up in the summer of 19. And that's very conceptual, because if we could move it faster, we would, and I think it's critical that if you, as a board, go option three, as I said, we'll prepare a more detailed phasing plan and schedule, so people could see rough blocks of time and how students would be moved throughout.
Has the cost of capital and escalation been figured in?
It has. This is based on recent bids inflated, based on input from seven regional Minnesota, Wisconsin-based construction managers, their opinions on inflation, to a spring or early spring of 2017 bid timeframe.
Through 19.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that is correct.
I just have one question. You said that the eight, was the ATSNR 30 million or 33? Was it about 30?
I think it was 36 million.
36 million? That was the ATSNR suggested stuff three years ago that we need to do with the high school building. In option one, which we would move the 10th, 11th, 12th out, leave it for eight, nine, the total estimated upgrade for the high school is 29, 9 to 32, 4. So all of the ATSNR stuff is not in there?
Right. For instance, like the parking lot, in the ATSNR report said to resurface the entire parking surface. That was a couple million dollars. That wasn't in there. Maybe Matt can talk about what other things.
Yeah, and the other way to remember, keep in mind, as we did all, as we tried to create apples-to-apples comparison, because the fear was anytime we put students back in the current building, if we weren't going to use the whole building, for example, and I don't believe in the eight, nine scenario, if I remember correctly, we would have needed every square foot of that building, based on the analysis of a square foot per student we were using. We actually scaled back how much of the building we would be remodeling as well, because we didn't want it to look as though we were inflating the cost of options purely to kind of rule them out. So we wanted the community to see, as best we could, apples-to-apples on a square foot per student basis, regardless of grade configuration, was the filter we used, and then we adjusted the budgets appropriately to make sure we were as, as much as we could be apples-to-apples for costs.
Okay, and you mentioned that in option three, that the price for the remodeling of the high school includes all new windows, doors, roofs. Is that also, would that have also been done in option one, making the building into an eight, nine, eight, nine grade?
I believe that was in the ATSNR report. I can look and see how we had that allocated.
But just, that was on 200,000 square feet of the building, right, Matt?
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't replacing all windows in the entire building, just the windows in the areas that we were going to use.
Correct.
Not replacing all roofs.
Okay.
There was between 3 and 4 million dollars of construction cost for roof, tuck pointing, and windows and doors.
And that was in the ATSNR report?
It was based on our analysis. We took their information of what they were recommending and budgeted it in manners that were more comfortable.
Okay, so then my question...
Can I make one quick?
Sure.
You have to correct me in this if I'm wrong, but ATSNR came back with a report, and it was like 15 percent contingency built into it.
Oh, yeah, it was high.
And then Hoffman came back, and they actually lowered it. So they did some things to actually reduce that number from whatever the starting point was with ATSNR. So I think there, I don't know if that 36 number really was the actual number. I think we, that had been reduced at some point.
I'm just leading to the question of if all of the windows and doors and roofs in option one for the new, for the high school building, renovation of the school for eight, nine, if all of them are not going to replace or were not necessary to replace in option one, why are they necessary to replace everything in option three?
The same dollars are carried for what we call building envelope improvements, so tuck pointing, exterior windows and doors and roofs, the same dollars are in option one as in option three.
Okay.
But the remodel is 110,000 different, because you were going to remodel only 170,000 square feet in option one, and in option three, you're doing 280,000 square foot.
Okay, thank you. That answers it.
And also, option three includes getting some natural light into that east section, right, which is, right now, has no windows.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions then? Otherwise, we could also talk about our timeframe, and this is kind of a question for you, Matt. What would you prefer to see if our, if our goal were to have a referendum resolution proposed and voted on at January 12th meeting? And we have a placeholder for January 25th, if there were some last-minute contingency that required us, that would still get us to the point where we comply with the law for an April 5th referendum, all right. But in order to get us to that spot, to be able to discuss this and vote on it on January 12th, would you recommend that we take some action tonight to go down to one option or two options? And certainly, our meeting on December 15th, you're going to report back your findings on December 1st and tell us whether or not the dollars have changed.
I would say, given kind of where we're at, and with the holidays being right in the middle of those two, I think, and I guess this week too, right? Didn't you say Thanksgiving is this week? I think if you can get to one, and by no means, I'm not trying to pressure you to do that, but if you could get to one option, I think there would be value. I think it would be better to invest our team and our engineer's team and your leadership team's time in really getting into the details on that one option. There are two major variables that are still hanging out there with these options. One is site development costs and engaging the city, if we go that route. So in any scenario, we really do need to have that engagement sooner rather than later, so we can pin down utility availabilities and stormwater requirements and any other requirements that they're going to have associated to development costs. So that's a pretty big piece that we need to move on. And then, as you noted, the December 1st meeting, where if we're turning engineers loose in the building, and that's the only option, for example, if you go option three, I think their time will just be more valuable, and I think the 15th will be a great meeting to really give you a lot more detail on what's included or not included in those budgets.
If we didn't get down to one tonight, and we tried to keep two options going, you'd have to have your engineers dividing their attention as to how the high school gets remodeled, whether it gets remodeled for a 912 or gets remodeled for an eight, nine building, for instance.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions about next steps or the survey results? Any board members?
Jamie, with regards to getting Bray's engineers onsite and what have you, are we going to put this through a competitive process? Are we talking RFQ before? I mean, I don't think it's necessarily fair to Bray for them to invest resources and not have us go through our competitive process.
For which, you mean?
To select a final architect.
Oh, the final architect, well, that's, we don't select a final architect till after the referendum passes. This, Bray is our pre-referendum architect, and so, once the referen, if the referendum passes, then you hire a architect that specifically designs the space.
Sure. And in the contract, you've already, you are already being paid for this development work?
That we are not at this point. We're doing it pro bono.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question for Dr. Olet. Can you think of any unknown variables that would, if we were to decide on one of the options tonight to facilitate what Bray is doing, are there any unknowns or anything that factor in here to affect how we go about making a decision tonight?
Well, I, not that I can foresee that would keep you from making a decision tonight. I think the, you know, as people have talked about, you've asked the community for their input. They've given you input. You have to decide how you want to take it. I think the components that are coming up, which Matt talked about, is the meeting with the city, so those are some of the unknown variables with the construction-related costs, but we'll have that regardless of any of the options, whether we're in the town of Hudson, the city of Hudson, town of Troy, I mean, it doesn't matter where it's at. So, you know, and a big thing is, is it's hard to get real good numbers on those until we've drilled down the option and tell them exactly what we're doing in those spaces. So I don't, I don't, right now, I can't foresee any variables that would pop up, not that I'm a, you know, crystal ball type of thing, but I don't see any variables that would pop up that you would get down the road that could...
Wouldn't the purpose of getting down to one tonight just be the opposite of, it's to eliminate those unknowns that allows then Bray and the experts to drill this down further and inform us on December 15th, these are the things we've discovered, and these are more things that you want to talk about, because that gives us still four more weeks before we have to address the referendum resolution.
You know, I think that's, I think that's a good point Jamie makes, but I think, you know, if you decide to go to one option, and if it happens to be option three, and you say, hey, but when you come back on the 15th of December, show us what the cost is associated with a two-story addition at the middle school versus a one-story. Show us what the cost is with a two-story addition at the high school versus a one-story, or, you know, they can give you different versions of the same option if you get down to one option. If you are still multiple options, it's hard to give you different versions of multiple options, at least not well. We'll continue to talk about... versions of multiple options, at least not well. We'll continue to talk about these things on a much higher level, where if you really want to drill in, if we want to know, you know, how much extra are we carrying in HVAC, for example, if we get down to one option, we can get there. You know, if we want to know how much extra we're carrying some of these other places. So, I guess.
Plus, we'd be able to do variations. They'd be able to do analysis, like at the middle school, instead of doing a, a one-house addition, doing a two-house addition, how much more that would be, be able to do the incremental cost for us analysis.
Okay, I just have one final one. This is it. Okay, so when I talk to the few parents that I know that have elementary kids, and I'll allude to a movie, they call it the nightmare on Vine Street as far as traffic. So, that's something that we would enter into a discussion with the city and county and whoever. Okay?
And I could address, obviously, any of the options, regardless of where they're located, are probably going to require the school district to do some infrastructure upgrades. And a lot of times, those things happen and include street-type of upgrades. Although, no matter where you go, and I've been in five different school districts, there are certain things that are guaranteed. Areas around high schools, before and after school, are not places you want to be. Areas around elementaries, before and after school, are not places you want to be. And it's just, because we have such a high concentration of cars, and there's almost, it's almost impossible to make it so that there would be no impact, or that you could just drive down Vine at seven o'clock in the morning like you could drive down Vine on a Saturday. I mean, it just, it, there's, there's nothing we can do to alleviate that. Even if we put a building out in the middle of the country, it's just the sheer number of cars. We have the same issue with our elementaries if you're dropping kids off. So, yes, we'll work with the city, but I, I don't want people to think that we can, you know, solve this one-hundred percent where people are just going to flow freely up and down Vine Street regardless of how much money we stick into it.
But again, to address Sue's question, that's kind of the exact purpose for getting down to one option, would allow us to conduct those meetings with the city. It's been a hindrance up to this point for you to be able to go to any municipality and start talking about details if we're still trying to juggle two or three options.
Yeah, and there's, but again, I don't want to pressure you to go there if you don't need to. But, there's no doubt it would be, sure be, I think, a far better use to a certain extent of your time as well. If you, tonight, are at consensus on what the option is that you want to see explored, I think it would only benefit you and us to, to make that move this evening. And I think it makes the meeting on the fifteenth that much better, because we can answer more questions that evening.
Okay. Sandy, were you going to make a comment?
Yes. After this presentation and looking at this, I had looked at it at home too, because we had received it earlier. I just see that there is, it is my belief that the community will not support anything other than option three from a dollar standpoint. And it's in the location. A lot of people want to stay central. I, I would be in favor of option three with, I need to see the figures, though. I'm very concerned about the eighty-five million, even though this research shows that that might go, that might be passed. I'm still very concerned about it, knowing this community. I'm in favor of option three with a lot more information about what exactly is included in it, and can we pare it down at all to get it more passable. I want it resolved. Everybody else does too. So, I'm speaking in favor of option three, and I don't think we should go with two options tonight. I think it's wasting their time. It's wasting our time. I, I believe this community has spoken through this great survey, and that's the option I, I think we need to go with.
Okay. I concur.
I concur.
Yeah, I, I think they're, they're extremely valid points Sandy made. I, I think a couple of other comments on top of the great location. For me personally, I like the nine-twelve configuration. I think that is, it's, it's been great for our community. I think it will continue to be great for our community, and there are a lot of people that spoke to that. You know, I think it will start to make an impact sooner. And we have a lot of discussion and people in the community that talk about the need to try and take some short-term steps. And this would allow us to take on some of those higher priorities again, given the, that it doesn't add a bunch of cost to, you know, do these things out of turn, if you will. And going through the referendum last time and really being a part of the community engagement process, it, it opened up my eyes to a few things. One, the total cost that the community is willing to support. And, and I want to make sure that we are very mindful of that. But also, the opportunity to, to do something with our high school that makes it look like it's not just a Band-Aid, but really a, a shift to, to be a school that we're proud of, that is going to address a number of the key core areas and concerns that were brought forward in the PST. So, there is a lot to be excited about and proud about in option three. And it, to me, is the only option to move forward with at this point in time with all of the information that we have as a board.
Yeah. You know, from a, a survey perspective, we talk about compromise. Ultimately, this option three gets us to a, a good spot. You know, again, I think as Lynn was mentioning earlier, going through Minnetaka High School, simply fantastic, just to see what, what they could do with the infrastructure they had and the spend. Ultimately, we can have something similar and do some really nice things, I don't want to say cost-effectively, but with the taxpayer in mind.
I, I think the community, considering the last time the referendum died at a hundred million, I think the community would be more than happy with eighty-six million, whatever numbers Bray comes up with. I have favored looking at results for the option one, but I'm real concerned about things like auditorium and plenary space for performances, et cetera, et cetera. I, as far as consensus, would support three, but I'm hoping when we have our discussion on the fifteenth, that we can talk a little bit more about the importance of, you know, the arts and music. And I know we had someone here tonight that is, comes from the arts as well. So, I'm hoping we can have more discussion about that and see, you know, what flexibility we might have in terms of improving that kind of space.
Okay. I would, unless there's other comments to be made during the, the work session here, or questions for our experts, I'd entertain a motion to reinstate Robert's rules, so we could have a formal motion put on the floor and debate that.
Yeah, just one comment, I guess. We will have to work on a referendum question, and that question ultimately could include options. You know, I think one of the things that we did see through the data, and that's why I do want to see some of the survey comments, is if fields and, and auditorium and performing arts would prevent us from passing the referendum, I, I, that concerns me. But, it doesn't mean that we don't give the community an opportunity to answer on those as secondary questions potentially. And that's something I think we'll need to decide as, as a group, because it's not to say that fields or auditoriums aren't important. It's just what the data tells us, and how do you read that data and use that as a, a piece of information to, to hopefully get this, this issue behind us.
And I would say, Bruce, that I have a lot of respect for the fact that I'm sitting with people who have already done this heavy-duty work for the previous referendum, and, and I'm learning from you.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to reinstate Robert's rules of order.
Second.
I moved in second to reinstate Robert's rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're back in Robert's rules, and our topic for action is proposed action on survey results. We've made some comments already, but it's certainly in order to make further comments. If there's a motion before the body, I intend to make comments then. But, I would entertain a motion that could take various forms, and we could just be more direct and recommend whatever options for further consideration, is the way I would phrase, you know, the motion, but.
I would, I would move to eliminate options one and two and proceed only with option three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second before the floor. And I guess, then I'll start the comments or continue the comments, whichever way you look at it. I think, one, I want to thank School Perceptions. I, you know, first was introduced to this idea virtually a year ago. It was November of two thousand fourteen in the wake of the last referendum, and we had an option to go with a post-mortem survey, to go through the community and try to figure out what went wrong, what variables do we need to change. And the board, as a whole, opted to instead go with a more extensive process that involved nine and a half months of community engagement culminating in the survey. And I think I've commented to other people that this meeting tonight was kind of like the birth of all those efforts for the nine and a half months of pregnancy that we had with the community engagement. But, I was extremely pleased with the thoroughness of the survey, how consistent it was, and the fact that the results didn't surprise me at all. Because this is very consistent with what we've been hearing in the community. The comments, you know, will provide one aspect, but remember, you're going to hear the comments. The fact that somebody puts their comments in capital letters, I don't think means that we have to listen. The person who shouts the loudest doesn't necessarily, but the one who has the numbers to support their position and the facts to back it up, that's what I would listen to as a board member. And then, when you look at our criteria for making this decision, which is basically consistent criteria, we've carried forward since the task force in two thousand four developed those criteria, and that is doing something that's most consistent with an efficient use of our existing facilities, and option three does that. Secondly, something that's consistent with our enrollment projections, which prior to this year, the enrollment projections were something for much, much higher. And I could understand why people would support a new school based on those projections that were basically pre-grade recession. The game has changed, and when you look at what we're proposing for adding square footage to this district, this is the most economical. You know, as much as everyone would love, you know, if price were no object, money were no object, and having a brand-new nine-twelve that was four-hundred thousand square feet, that's fine, but it's not supported or necessary by our numbers, and it's certainly not supported by the, these survey results as far as what would be supported by, by the voters. And I think we do a disservice to our taxpayers, our residents, and to our students and, and staff if we continue to entertain options that do not have a realistic pa, chance of passing in, in the near future. So, for all those reasons, I'm strongly in favor of the motion as proposed.
Mr. President, I will go along with this tonight. I will vote yes on this motion, with the understanding that I really want to see very extensive information on what is going to be done. As Mr. Weiss mentioned, we, we need to see what's going to be done in this money, so that we can go out there and try to get the community to understand what it's going to cost and why is it going to cost as much as we're saying it is. With that caveat, I will go along with this tonight and then expect to see very thorough vetting of it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I would, I would echo Sandy's comments. I think, I think you do deserve to see that, and I think the community deserves to see exactly what you're saying, how the dollars will be spent, and, and addressing what those needs are and how you're fulfilling those needs.
One last comment. Remember, you heard Mr. Weiss say, if he can see it, he'll go along with it. I'm going to hold him to it.
We got it on video, yes.
We got it on video.
We got it on video. The options. So, will you have some options as part of that? For instance, two houses over one, what the costs are, and then what's some options or decisions that we'll have to make within the high school that keep our costs to, again, some alternatives with the data that we have, with the vetting process that will take place? I would, I would hope that we don't just have to look at one option that's eighty-six million, you know, and some change. Like, like if we could have something that's maybe eighty million, you know, in some version thereof, whether it's upper seventies, it would be nice to see that, so that we can think through that and what inappropriate referendum question will be, would be very helpful for me as well.
I'm sorry, before you answer that, Matt, when you say one house versus two, are you saying per grade or in total?
Be, excuse me, it would be two additional houses. So, I believe there's six classrooms per house, if memory serves me correctly. Might be five.
Five. So, there's five classrooms per house. So, one, one house would add one house overall. If we looked at, if we looked at two houses, for example, we could possibly then revamp, we currently have Merlin House, that would be house number three, which would give us an extra house at each grade level. And then, we could do some reconfiguration of the folks that are currently housed, you know, currently using Merlin House throughout the entire building. So, by going with a two-story addition or two-house addition, we feel that we could probably get to the point where we could get an extra house at each grade level. Two new ones and repurposing an existing house.
So, the motion on the floor is to approve, run with, option three solely. Talking about Bray's involvement, that's a sec, separate discussion?
No.
Not for, not for, not for right now. That would be a separate one.
Understood, understood. My, the pricing of this, the eighty-six million dollars that we're talking about is, we, we pass a referendum, we're making promises to our community. The concern that I have is being, where we have to come back and value engineer the project, or we ask for so much money that it simply doesn't pass. And I would recommend potentially, if there's, you know, perhaps pay Bray for this activity and have another firm come and study the same scope. If Bray's going to have folks onsite, but perhaps we should have a separate firm onsite as well. Purpose, purpose again, would be, let's confirm pricing, and I think we can get something done in a, in a reasonable amount of time.
Comment?
Yes.
It's a question, question more than anything. To put an RFP out, Tim, you'd be able to answer this, to educate someone from a different firm on our, on our, all, all of the work that Bray's gone through, unless it was Hoffman, right, for instance, we, we would not be able to get an April referendum. In my, in my, that would be a concern for me.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at a, a full process like we did before, that takes, it'll take a couple of months to go through and select somebody. That's the first part, a couple of months probably to select a firm. And then, to have them start that process of, of reviewing that information, you know, again, I, I'm not sure how much time is saved, how much time they're going to be able to save. A lot of times, firms like to come in and do their own work, their, their own analysis.
Yeah, so another, another question then, because that would put us at a November, most likely, only because the community, I think, has also spoken that they want to see it on a general, not necessarily a special date. So, that would be one concern. The other comment, I guess, that I'll make in this, for the board, Sandy, you were part of the process where we selected Bray, and we saw a number of, of firms come through. I think also, when you look at a square footage dollar figure for the construction, we've not seen a lot of variation from what we see, what we saw from Hoffman versus what we, what we see from Bray. So, I, I think the vetting process that took place to select Bray out of, I think it was, we probably had five finalists that we interviewed.
Yeah, I think, I think it was five.
And there was a number that submitted bids, but there were five finalists. They presented. We then selected Bray. And I guess I'll make my final comment, and I think Bray has done one hell of a job. And they have put a tremendous amount of time, energy, and effort into this to get us thus far. So, personally, I've, this is one board member, I'm very comfortable with Bray at least coming up with the numbers at this point in time to, to, to move us forward. I know we would need to then go through another vetting process later, but I'm very comfortable with the expertise and the work that Bray's done, and it's just a vote of confidence for everything that you've, you know, committed to this community.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn?
I concur with Bruce.
I concur with Bruce on his comments. One other thing I would mention is, you know, the, the timing of getting everybody up to speed, I agree with you on as well. But, you know, I look at the body and the level of work that they've done to just try to put some very high-level budgetary numbers together. Now, this next process, and I know one of the concerns is these numbers, a lot of people felt these numbers are too high. Well, they can't really dig into a solution without getting into the nitty-gritty and the details. And I'm very confident that they'll be able to do that level of work and get us to a budget number that our community can support within, you know, looking at what we're trying to accomplish, looking at the goals that we have, looking at, you know, supporting the 21st century curriculum that we want to have. Just, they're up to speed, they're ready to go and now they can dig in and tweak those numbers and get them to something that we can bring forward to our community in a referendum. I agree with you that going forward, we should make sure that, you know, we're still on the same page and we feel like they're the firm that we want to go forward with on post-referendum. But we've hired them to do this scope of work and we had an extensive vetting process to do that, so...
Given this is my industry, perhaps I don't have, or I do have, rather, insight that the rest of the board does not. You know, I'll share that I do have concerns. I know that we're making promises to our community. If it turns out that we put forth a number and, for whatever reason, it doesn't go well, it, it makes all of us collectively as a board look poor. But I'll support, you know, moving forward tonight for the sake of the group. I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Of Rob? Are, if I'm understanding your concern, it's that the figures that we ultimately put forth at a community may end up being less than we, than the reality, than what we actually need? Is that, am I reading your concern correctly?
We may be short. And you always run that risk, of course, no matter what, what the process, of course. From a history perspective, Bray hasn't fared well. And that...
On coming in with accurate numbers, you're saying?
Correct.
All right, well, I think we've got, the motion is out there as to move forward with option one. And when it comes to, I'm sorry, option three, will become our one and only option, I should say. That's basically where we're at. As far as the numbers, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I've heard is that what you get pre-referendum and post-referendum as far as the design, doesn't necessarily mean the same, especially if you go with a different architect. Bray's doing all this knowing that they may not be the architect post-referendum. But I think that to add another firm at this time and virtually guarantee that we're not going to get to a referendum in April, which sets our whole timetable back, potentially adds another construction year to the project, makes it 2020 instead, it would be highly destructive. I think that we need to move forward. We can always check these numbers, if you will. I mean, once they get it, but to have two sets of engineers walking through our building, sometime in what, January? If we were to do two-month search for another architect firm, I don't think it's necessary. I do think we've gotten an incredible value with what Bray has done. They've gone above and beyond anything that could have been imagined. No one would have thought we would have 22 options that they would have to cost out down to, well, some round numbers. But still, they costed out 22 options. If they had known that, instead of 75,000, they probably would have asked for 175,000. They're already exhausted what we've retained them to do money-wise and they're now moving forward, willing to basically vet their numbers that they've given. These are estimates. And what we're asking them to do is come up with more precise numbers based on some more detailed analysis. I think we're ready to move forward with that. But the motion does not have anything in there about changing our architect firms or adding architect firms at this point. So is there any further comments?
I'll reserve comment.
Okay. If not, if there's not any further debate, willing to have the motion be called for?
I call, call, call for the vote.
Okay. Calling for roll call vote or just a vote?
No, I'm just asking that the discussion be stopped and we vote on this.
Good idea, Sandy.
All right, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now I'm on the question as worded by, in the motion. I don't have the exact wording, but basically, we are eliminating options one and two and going with option three for further consideration and detailed analysis. And then we'll be taking it up at a future meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. We have no further business. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.